You must start on your MacBook first. Log on to Zoom, right?
I'd like to call this regular meeting the Hinkley Township Board of Trustees Order on Tuesday, May 21, 2024 at 6:30 PM. I'll call the role Asherol.
Here.
Engelmann.
Here.
Sweattick here. I'd like to ask everyone to join in honoring the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a full house tonight.
Um.
Thank you both for coming.
By full house, you meant two, is that? Okay.
I was being sarcastic, sorry.
I will.
She can hear you or didn't hear anything, so.
Move to approve the minutes for the May 7, 2024 Regular Trustee Meeting.
Second.
Discussion. I have one edit to it on page five, paragraph two. Need to change it to "The Harry acknowledged the report and said there should be no change in elevation as two inches were milled out and replaced with two inches of new material, and that it may be due to the way the contractor had finished out the asphalt around the manhole." And I will provide that edit to Martha for an update.
Second as amended?
All in favor?
Aye.
Martha is not with us this evening. Fire? Police is not here either. Do you have any? I understand neither of you had anything for him for this evening?
I did not.
Okay.
Um.
Uh, fire.
Request to move Matthew Connors from probationary pay of fifteen fifteen per hour to paramedic pay at nineteen dollars per hour effective immediately.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye. A motion to accept the resignations of fighter, fighter, paramedics Matthew Marinella and Cameron Bott effective immediately.
Discussion?
Um, just for everyone's information, Matthew Marinella is, has resigned. He was, these were both wonderful additions to our, our fire department. But Matthew Marinella took a full-time job at the beginning of the year, and it's just really difficult for him to balance both right now. So he has chosen to resign from Hinkley and focus on his full-time position. And Cameron Bott also working full-time for another department and has started up his own business. So, um, he's had to resign also, which leads us back to the decision that we made a couple of weeks ago of pursuing full-time firefighters.
And we thank them both. Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, nothing from service. I do have an item that I had under me for the Bethany work. So I'll move to adopt a resolution to advertise for bids for the Hinkley Township 2024 Bethany Lane Roadway Improvements Project on May 24, 2024 and May 31, 2024 in the Medina County Gazette. Sealed bids must be received at Hinkley Town Hall at 1410 Ridge Road, Hinkley, Ohio, no later than June 7, 2024 at 12:00 PM Ohio time. Bids will be opened at 12:30 PM on June 7, 2024 during a special trustee meeting. The engineer's estimated cost for this project is $457,902.50.
Second?
Second, any discussion?
Uh, what was the second date? I got May 24th.
And the 31st.
And the 31st, and then, uh, opening will be, uh, June 7th, you said?
Correct.
Um, do we want to, Pat, do we want to vote and then discuss, um, timing for that?
I don't understand.
What time we will do the opening?
The opening is 12:30.
Oh, 12:30, okay, sorry.
Bids do at noon, opening at 12:30, special meeting.
I was writing down too many other things I missed.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Second, if I did not already seconded.
Okay.
I will be unable to attend the opening of June 7.
Very good, okay. Uh, Asherol?
Yes.
Engelmann?
Yes.
Sweattick, yes. Zoning?
Zoning and move to get a deed that needs a signature, some terms. So need two witnesses, volunteer to come up.
Thank goodness you all showed up. Would have had to have been tabled.
Right, uh, let's see, this is the.
Twenty-first. May?
May.
I don't want to mess up, I only got one copy here. All right.
Need a pen?
Oh, please, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm only sorry why you're timing it.
It's like, I feel like summer vacation has.
I know, it started, I know.
And I don't even get a summer vacation, but I feel like, thank you.
So, um, we'll just move on to cemeteries here. Um, do you have in your packet the revised fee schedule? I'm just gonna do jump to that first.
Yes.
So this is something that I spoke about last meeting. The, um, locations where a burial is requested during a weekday but in the afternoon, requiring overtime from our service department. And we have just been charging the regular fees. So recommending that we charge the same fee as if it was a holiday or a weekend in order to accommodate the overtime that we have to pay to our service department. So that burials that occur on a weekday after 2:00 PM would be, um, charged at same rate, and that would be nine hundred for a full casket and two seventy-five for cremation. So the, you have two sheets of paper, one just kind of shows all the edits, and then there's a, the final, what will be the final schedule. So if there's any questions regarding that.
Thank you for having both of them, because that's easier.
Well, um, yes, it's easier. Suzanne had a nice job of actually doing that.
I agree with the change.
Okay, so in that case, I will make a motion to approve the revised cemetery burial fee schedule reflecting weekday after hours fee. Reflecting weekday after hours fee, um, coverage effective upon, effective upon approval today, May 21, 2024.
Second.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, then, um, Maple, I'm sorry, not Maple, Ridge Cemetery, and that Victoria last week, I think it was, whenever, and, um, the gas line was toned out, so there were flags staked on the property. There's actually two sets of flags, because the guys weren't exactly sure. Uh, they did two different methods resulting in kind of a, quite a bit of variance, you know, probably twenty feet between one and the other. But anyway, um, I would say that the, uh, line that was closer to the, our current cemetery property line was probably about seventy feet, I think, uh, or maybe actually more.
Might have been, I don't remember.
Ninety, I can't, maybe it was ninety, but I, I think our first, um, gas swag of fifty feet, we would definitely clear the pipeline, um, would be safe, you know, if we wanted to consider that donation. I wouldn't want to go beyond fifty feet, so we would be talking about a rectangular piece that's fifty feet north to south, and it's like three hundred feet, I think, east, east to west, or something like that.
And there are flags down now?
The yellow utility.
Yellow, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yellow gas flag is still there, I didn't move them, and I won't move them.
Yeah.
Because they're not in my way or anything.
Okay.
So yeah, if you guys wanted to go out there and look at them.
Yes, I actually meant to reach out to you and, and go walk it, and I was out of town last week for work, so, yeah. Um, possibly end of this week or sometime next week, but yes.
Wear tall boots or long pants, because probably ivy's growing.
Yeah, and the briars and.
Briars and stuff, so.
But if it doesn't rain, it won't be as much fun.
Right, that way you can slide in the mud, I mean, that's, that's a, you know, it's like.
I'll wear my soccer boots.
Anyway, so, um, so, you know, I feel comfortable with that fifty feet, I think, you know, the question now kind of comes back to whether we want to pursue accepting this donation. And if we do, the next step would have to be to survey that area. And, um, I don't want to speak for Victoria, but I believe Victoria said she would be willing to make a donation to the cemetery.
To the township.
To the township.
That's the only way that I can deduct the expenses is if I make a donation to the township, and the township covers the expenses.
Right. If we, so, if she made the donation, we use that money towards conducting a survey, which would have to be done.
Yeah, we need a survey, and then we need an appraisal of the land and some legal work, and I don't know what all is involved. I haven't looked into anything, because I was waiting for you guys to say, yes, we want this. And if you don't, that's okay too.
Yeah, so I, that's, so we kind of come back to that fundamental question. Now that I, we feel assured that fifty feet northward of the current property line is, um, workable in the sense that there's no hazards there. The question now becomes whether we actually want to accept the donation, um, or not. And if we do, that would be the next steps. Survey.
So would there be another agreement drafted, I'm assuming, for that?
Maybe, well, if there needs to be a formal agreement, I guess, or, you know.
Well, I.
You guys say you want fifty feet, okay, I'll make arrangements for a survey and all the other work that needs to be done, so I can get a mouse. I've been holding off, because I didn't know for sure you wanted it. And the survey may end up waiting until October, when most of the vegetation's.
Got it.
Which is fine, I'm, there's no sense of urgency with it.
Done by December 15, though.
That, you have the sense of urgency, okay. Um, I know, I, I, I appreciate both of you, um, you know, all the work that you did, um, especially, you know, making sure that we know exactly what it is that we're taking with the gas lines. So I think it's a very generous offer to the township. I'm sure that the, the additional property will be used for a drive for additional plots. I'm sure it will be used, because we have a finite number of spaces, and we only have three very small cemeteries in town. So I'm very appreciative of you donating that to the township.
Great, so you want time to go look yet, I'm assuming?
No, no.
No, that's fine, you come out and look, I, you know, I'm not, it doesn't have to be done today.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that, I just, for my own, for my own benefit, I wanted to go and, and take a walk. So I'm, I'm fine, knowing that you've already walked it a couple of different times, and, um.
Yeah, but it's still worthwhile, taking a look, but, um, you know, once we have consensus as to whether we want to move forward or not, then, you know, I would just start doing some preliminary work, because there will have to be some kind of agreement, um, eventually, so, you know, I'd like to kind of start doing background work and, because all of a sudden, October will show up, we'll have a survey, and that's going to be bam, bam, bam. And so I'd like to have as much.
Why is time flying?
Time is flying, yes. So, um, so I heard, Monique, that you said you're good with it, Jack.
Yeah.
You're good with it, okay. So, and, you know, I, in the short-term run, there's trees there, and they'll just continue to be there, and, but there's grass, there's a rail fence that eventually can be at least taken down, and some of that grass could be continued to be mowed if we need some excess space, but after it's all said and done. But knowing that, we want to move forward. Um, I think then we could work together to continue that.
Great, thank you.
So, thank you very much, Monique.
And yeah, if you want, if you want to come out and walk it, want me to walk it with you, let me know.
Cindy sent me your number, so I, it's on, it's on, you're on my growing list.
Oh, good.
You are on my growing list of people to reach out to, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay, um, that's all I have for right now.
Moving on to me?
I'm going to go first, no, go ahead.
Um, I wanted to, um, just bring up and see if you both have had an opportunity to look any further at the information that was provided to us from Miles Huska at the last meeting regarding the sign, the electric sign, and what your thoughts were.
I have, I mean, I, I think the, um, the entire concept is very, very nice. I like the different options, and certainly it was great overview. Um, I'm looking at the zoning regulations regarding signs, and there's a whole chapter dedicated to it. Signs are very important here in the township. And while there's been discussions as to, you know, what needs to take place if the sign is a certain size or whatever, there is also an exemptions, section 10.4, and 10.4C says all signs erected and maintained pursuant to any township function are exempt from the regulations under the zoning resolution. So, and I think perhaps, maybe as part of the discussion afterwards, somebody alluded to the fact that we can exempt ourselves. And so it's actually, we'd be exempting ourselves under the zoning regulations to exempt ourselves.
Yeah, I don't, um, because I actually received an email about it, thank you for that, and I could not, and I just didn't have a chance to go back and watch that meeting again. I knew that I had talked about it with Martha, I don't know if we talked about it during the meeting.
I hadn't seen that part of the meeting yet.
Oh, we did, okay.
I watched, I mean, you can do that, so.
All right, so then disregard, okay, so we did, we did address that, so thank you.
She did mention something that we could exempt ourselves, and I, that's probably, that would be the way to do it.
It's nice to know people are watching after, after the meeting, so, and truly, thank you for reaching out, I, I do appreciate it. Because we are all human, and I'll speak for myself, not Cindy or Jack, but I do make mistakes, so I appreciate.
As do we all.
I appreciate it.
Welcome.
So, um, with, you know, I guess, when the time comes, you know, if we, if we make that a stipulation in terms of that exemption, um, then that would make the process easier for us, not having to get.
Um, so you already did more research than I did on that, because, um, would that also, um, keep us exempt the fact that we are, this is actually zoned residential, not business?
Um, no, I mean, um, residential act, right, is different than commercial or business. Um, but remember with residential, you can have things such as signs at the entrance of development. And while that's not the same, um, you can still have permanent signs in a residential area, but I, I think that the fact that we are township and use it for township functions, so, you know, not for cute sayings.
We already talked about that.
Will validate.
Yeah.
You know, that, and, and I would, you know, still get, um, legal counsel on this, just to make sure that we're in the right. But, um, that would be.
Can you clarify where the sign is going?
Yes, um, what we had, um, discussed was with the sign that's at the historical building right now, if you recall, when it used to be in front of Town Hall, where that big, um, rock is right now, that's where it used to be, so it was, um, kitty corner, so it was facing directly at Veterans Memorial Park, if you recall, that's how it was, though. Yes, um, so that's what we were looking at again, is doing it diagonally, because I think you'll be able to see it from three directions, you know. Um, Mr. Huska had mentioned, if you got a sign kind of like Granger Fire Department, they have theirs. I just think that, um, I, I don't know how much you'll actually get from people on 303, because it would have to be set back, because we've got, um, you know, the utility poles out there, and we have, um, the electric box out there, so if we had it two-sided, I think that this would be the best way to have it, how the former sign used to be. And while I, I mean, I do, I do like seeing the thought of a bigger sign versus a smaller sign. I think that this is intended to inform our residents with what is going on. It's intended to let our residents know when there's going to be meetings, um, some topics that are discussed. So I would say that, I mean, not the bigger the better, I mean, because we could go huge with that, but, um, you know, the sign, the size that he had, um, come to us with the five by six, I thought would be appropriate, considering the fact that it will be set back further from the road in front of the building, and, um, you'll be able to, just the bigger it is, you'll be able to see it more beyond that electric box and everything else. That's what we were taking into consideration, so.
And the fate of the sign on the historical building?
Mr. Pearl, I don't know if he, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, I know the rules.
You can take the microphone back there with you if you want, you guys can just pass it around.
Uh, Richard Pearl, I have one more question. What, what will the fate be of the sign that's now marking the historical building?
It cannot be repaired.
I, no, I'm not suggesting that at all, it'll be taken down?
It'll be taken, oh, yeah, that's going to be, um, we talked about it our last meeting also, we're going to be accepting the donation of the clock from, um, the bicentennial, so that's what will go, not necessarily in its place, but in that vicinity.
I'm good.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, so do we want to talk about our, our thoughts with what was presented to us? Objections or?
So the five by six is, that is the actual display area that's?
Yes.
Without any kind of.
Without any border or anything. And remember, he said we can make that smaller, if we wanted to do that, um, but five foot by six, yeah.
So, just for me, I, I don't know the whole zoning resolution, obviously. What size can we get to and still stay within the spirit of the resolu, the, you know?
Probably, um, what you have like across the street.
Yeah.
It's, uh, it's small, it's like, um, so, I mean, you know, if you want to do anything beyond the minimum in the, like, I mean, like I said, I want to make sure I clear this from a legal perspective of the exemption, but let's just say we couldn't, that exemption was not valid, then the residential, it's, um, it's small, um.
Commercial's thirty-two, I think, isn't it?
Yeah, I want to say thirty-two, but I, yes, it's, uh, thirty-two square feet, um, that, oh.
So that's not even, five by six is smaller than that.
But actually, like, see, but then, see, you know, you always can, like, argue things in context. So for instance, a, um, a sign at the entrance to subdivision can be up to sixty-four square feet, maximum height eight feet. So, you know, this would be almost like comparable more, say, to, you know, an entryway, so, but that would be like part of getting a, a variance, um, but.
I, my opinion, I think that's the first thing we needed to do is know what direction we can go in before we, you know, get down the rabbit hole and.
So, because five times six is?
Thirty.
Thirty, and, um, so it's still, you know, would be under the thirty-two square feet. And it can't be higher than eight feet, and then, again, um, how is it measured from the ground? You know, like, if it's set up on blocks, then that's going to be added to the, the, the height, so to speak. So that's why I asked if it was framed or not framed, because that can also be added into the calculation.
Our square feet.
Sure. Which makes the display area smaller. But, um, I would rather first just pursue the exemption interpretation, just so that I'm reading it correctly.
And I was not looking for an answer from either of you, I just, you know, I wanted to follow up with him, because I have not followed up with him since that last meeting, um, to say, yeah, you know, we're actively discussing it, and we're leaning towards this or that, you know, but I can let him know we're going to have, um, send it to the prosecutor.
Yeah, yeah, I'll have a conversation.
And I'm looking at the digital aspect of it as well, that.
Yeah, that's all, you know, and that's called out specifically in here, but again, um, if it's exempted under item C, then all those things, because like in our regulations, we talk about if you're like changing signs and he, changing messages, he talked about, you know, nothing less than one per eight, one message changed for eight seconds.
Every eight seconds.
Our regulations say ten seconds.
Okay.
So, you know, I mean, um, I, I'd rather be certain that the exemption applies or does not apply, or whatever, before we move forward, but my reading of it is, it would seem that it, it does, but I want to have that conversation.
Yep.
Legal.
Okay. It is a group effort, okay.
And then, um, since you mentioned dimension five by six, which, um, number of, you know.
The pixels?
Pixels, were you looking at?
Um, so I was going to, I, I will send him a follow-up, um, email after this meeting, so that, um, I just, I, I wanted to get a consensus before I did that, because I have not asked him what the pixels are at Granger, um, because that would give me a better idea of what we would be looking at. I got the impression that it wasn't even ten, it was higher than that at Granger, but I do not know. So let me, um, get an answer from him with what Granger is using, I mean, did I, did I forge you both electronically?
Okay. Printed copies, but, you know, like.
Correct.
Sometimes.
And I, so we have them on our computer, but I did print them also, and normally, I think you can see things better on the computer.
Right.
Not the case here, I think this being printed was like, wow, is that, I can really see the difference in the printed version.
Because the sixer to ten is definitely, you know, let's say sixteen and twenty, I think it's too grainy.
Absolutely.
So the ten would seem reasonable, I, in some instances, based on pictures, it was harder.
And I think this might be where Granger is.
At sixteen.
Mm-hmm, that's it, but I will, I will ask.
Well, what I was going to ask is, does he have any locations where summer and use that we would be able to look at?
Oh, I'll ask him, I'll, I'll ask him.
Yeah, yep, that's.
Good suggestion. Okay, so you will start with the prosecutor. I will follow up with Miles to let him know, um, you know, what we're doing at our end, and, um, ask these follow-up questions, and I will just forge you both his response to that. Um, Community Shred Day, we have had, um, several residents reach out to Suzanne. I've had a couple of emails from, um, residents asking if we're going to be doing another shred day like we did last year. I did reach out to both of the companies that we used last year, um, and Black Ops Destruction has said that they could do it again, they gave me two dates of July 13th or August 31st, if, um, there's any preference for either of you on that, and actually, they can now, um, he said bring two trucks, because they can do the. for either of you on that. And actually, they can now, um, he said bring two trucks because they can do the paper shredding, but then they can also now do electronic shredding and they can do medical shredding, which I had to look that up because I wasn't exactly sure what the medical shredding was, but it's, you know, syringes, um, pill bottles, um, bio waste. They can, um, now take care of all of that.
Can I bring all the grandkids' dirty diapers? Is that what you're talking about?
They, they may have some exceptions to it, but I can definitely follow up with that one also. Dirty diapers.
Them right now.
No, I'm saying I'll start. Oh, for my friends.
Um, so I actually thought that was great, that it's kind of a one-stop shop. Um, but I wanted to see, um, both of your thoughts on that. Um, July thirteenth, which is a Saturday, um, or August thirty-first?
Oh, that is that first.
Yeah, August thirty-first. So those were two available dates.
I'm going on the thirteenth and I may be going on the thirty-first.
How's retirement?
It's pretty good.
Okay. Good for you. Um, I, which I mean, we don't, we don't have to be there. I mean, I would say even like if, if you're going to be here, maybe because that was a long day that we did last year, um, maybe if we split it so that-
So, uh, by August thirty-first, kids are back in school. So, you know, do you want to do this when kids are out of school or, or people are back in school? You know, you got like people might be away in July. Yeah, so they might more likely be, I, I mean, I'm just throwing those
That's-
just thoughts out.
That's fair. Um, I will ask him if, uh, the thirty-first, just say that would be our preferred date.
Sure.
Um, and also I just need to verify that that day will work with Hinckley Preparatory because they are going to let us use their parking lot, um, which says that, you know, they were wide open. Um, okay. Movie night sponsors, ask and you shall receive. Um, after the last meeting, the Firefighters Association reached out to me and offered to host the movie night, um, sponsor the movie night with the movie rights for, um, this coming first movie on June first, which, um, since we had asked for sponsors at the last movie or at the last meeting and I had to, um, you know, get the title, they actually just paid the invoice. Um, so thank you, Hinckley Firefighters Association. They are sponsoring, uh, our first movie night. And then for our second movie night in August, the Hinckley Holiday Market had requested to be a sponsor, but as I understand, trustee Svedek-
I was feeling pretty good before the meeting because First Day School Supplies offered to make a donation through the Police Association to sponsor both nights. So
Possibly.
We'll see what we can do with that.
Um, I, I know some people with the Hinckley Holiday Market, so I can let them know that there was another sponsor um, that, that requested to sponsor a night. So possibly, um, if First Day School Supplies wanted to do the August night and then sit tight on their second, that, you know, if this is a success, we can have two movie nights next year and maybe we could do First Day School Supplies and the Holiday Market can do them both. So we're lining them up. So we've got everybody ready to go. But thank you very much to everyone who volun- you know, who, um, volunteered to sponsor First Day School Supplies, the Fire Association and the Holiday Market.
Very generous of them both.
Yes. Of all.
All three, yes.
Um, hmm. Okay, uh, I forwarded you both the email from the attorney um, regarding their recommendations for the changes in the fire compensation uh, packet. And I have suggested that perhaps, um, it would be best if the attorney come out here and speak with us all about it and have a special meeting. I did confirm with Chief Grossenbaugh, his availability and also the attorney's availability, and we would be looking at next Friday, May thirty-first. Um, times are wide open.
Morning's open.
I would prefer morning. The attorney said it was all, the entire day was open and Chief Grossenbaugh said the entire day. So I floated a timeout there to the attorney, um, possibly nine AM. I didn't know if that would-
Sounds good to me.
Okay. Um, Jack?
Sleeping.
No. He's planning his next vacation.
I know.
He's got to meet with his travel agent.
It's why he's dreaming it.
So eight at night's off the table. I, I'll, I'll get up for you, nine AM.
Okay. All right. So we will have a special meeting next Friday, May thirty-first at nine AM. Very good. Um, and we did receive a email from Linda, um, president of the Hinckley Garden Club about the community garden plots that they were able to get those, um, cleaned up and they look really good. Um, so this is our reminder to the public, if anyone would like to utilize a free garden spot, um, we have fourteen spots available, um, right in front of the service department. It's between the fire department and the service department and they are free to residents if anybody would like to use them. And the form is on our website under, I looked it up right before the meeting, so I could give you detailed instructions of where to go. It's, uh, on our website. Go under the community tab and it's programs and services and it's the very first tab. So you can, um, download that and drop off your form if you would like to have a garden spot. And thank you very much to the garden club for all of the work they did cleaning that up and getting it ready. And for those of you who came in today, you saw our planters are back up and they planted some new plants and it looks beautiful. So thank you very much. And I think that is all I have.
Okay. Um, I skipped over one item. I will move to pay the bills in the amount of five hundred eighty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety-four dollars and fifty cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. And you're telling him he's sleeping.
I know. Well, I was, I just realized I have a couple more items to talk about.
We passed you.
Yes.
Uh, just a reminder that the annexation appeal hearing is May thirty at eleven o'clock at Medina County Courthouse. Um.
Um, do you want to just maybe give, um, what that's going to look like for any members of the public that want to attend that, um, just so they know it's going to be extremely brief. It's not going to be, um,
Yes, the two sides will present their, basically their briefs and.
This is in a traditional courtroom setting as opposed to the administrative setting with a commissioner.
Right. It's, it's an appeal, so the attorneys for each side get so much time to make their case, their argument. It's all based on whatever's been entered into the record up to this point. And then, uh, there'll be a decision comes out of that in a couple of months afterwards or however long the, the judge, but yes.
It's not group participation. That's what you're looking for, yeah.
No.
That's a real.
And it's going to be, I mean, like under an hour, like I think it's fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I think each side.
For each side. So just wanted to make sure everybody is aware of that. If anyone was planning on attending, don't be late because he could miss us.
And the line again?
At eleven.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Uh, I just wanted to make a note about that Bethany Lane Roadwork, the prosecutor's office had reviewed and edited the bid package before, uh, went out, before we finalized it. So. Um, first energy pole access for banners and flags. So it's, it's not a speedy process. There are forms, uh, I believe I sent those to you for consideration. We can look at it. Obviously, we won't have anything in place for Memorial Day, but, um, it talks about flags and banners of certain sizes. And it requires identification of the subject poles and you can't, I think it's limited to like a dozen that you can ask them to inspect and decide whether or not they're going to let it occur on the pole. Flags have to be, uh, frangible mount, wind, uh, the, the ability to reject wind. And I didn't see anything relative to electric for what you talked about. I think that's a whole different animal. And that might be something that we'd have to talk with, when they want to redo these, uh, signals and light posts here.
Is that going to be the electric company? Will be part of them?
I don't know, but I, maybe it's something we can do in conjunction with those, yeah.
So, um, so the public's aware of what it is that we are discussing right now is, you go back to the wish list meeting, um, I had mentioned how I thought it would be nice to get, um, the Christmas, um, lights that they have like in Brunswick, a lot of, um, a lot of townships and cities have them where they mount it to the pole and light it up as part of the Christmas decor. Um, I was going to reach out to them at, about that because we would have to use the, the electric company's, um, poles for that and get their permission. And then we would also have to have outlets installed on all of them. So that was what we were just discussing. And does that-
That tied in with, uh, last year, the chamber had talked about, uh, hometown heroes banners, putting those up and, um, nothing, we, we had heard nothing on that. And, and, uh, last meeting, the chamber asked if we would look into, uh, getting access for the poles. So that's what prompted that, in addition to the possibility of utilizing them for putting up flags for the parade, those kind of things. Um, we can certainly continue down the path as a government entity and work with them. I'm sure that they'd be open to that. They have a government liaison as well, so.
So would it be your recommendation that I hold off on contacting them until the new signals?
Well,
For the lights, specific to the lights.
Because I, I just got that stuff and I read through it today. We might want to check with the community that already has it and see what they did to-
Well, it's a good idea. I can call Paul in Brunswick.
We, we might also want to consider chapter ten again, sign regulations where there are some prohibitions and right now, one of those prohibitions, not saying how to be interpreted, is flags and banners. And so, um,
But nothing about Christmas, though?
Well, there's lighting too, you know, so.
I thought decorations don't fall under that statute.
Well, you know what, I, I just want, I want to be clear on that.
More to come.
Because, you know, once you open the door for one, then there could be other types of things.
And that may be why it's better to keep it inside the township as opposed to, I mean, we can certainly provide the information to the chamber if they wanted to pursue it. And then that would be, you know, they may be subject to what you're talking about there as well.
Right. And that's, that's just what I'm thinking. And I'm thinking in advance, you know, like, okay, you know, I appreciate the hometown hero, but then next, you know, like some of the communities have different banners they've put up for different seasons. And is that where we want, I mean, you know, and I'm not saying it's good or bad, but.
At some point, when you try to draw a line or you're able to.
That's right.
Yeah.
So we may want to look at signs, much like we talk about signs that go over the top of roofs that are big and inflatable. You know, those are all types of things that we may want to look at.
All right. So I will read into that further and if you guys would, then we can discuss it further. Fair enough?
Fair.
Fair.
Uh, last item that I have is a, uh, the raw wishlist that Martha had asked me to reach out to them. Again, I did. And they're kind of happy with where they're at, but they said if they had to come up with a list, uh, they were looking, probably their first thing on the list would be youth field renovations, similar to what they did with, uh, Coback Fields. So, uh, they had that. They had a, a Coback maintenance item, a youth field concession maintenance item. And then their last thing was, uh, the, the youth field, they ground update to that. They would like to see something updated with that. So I asked-
It's been there since nineteen sixty-two?
I think that was their issue.
Okay.
They, uh, I got back with them today and asked them, you know, to see if they can get some estimates on there. I think if the youth field renovation was at the top of their list, that would probably utilize the, the funds that we have remaining in that line item for this year. So, um,
Do you know roughly what, what we have left in that?
Uh, I would say in the neighborhood, by the time we're done with the stuff that Mike's doing over there now, maybe seven to eight thousand, somewhere in there.
So that would be one field over there?
Depending. I don't know what needs to be done. That's why I need an estimate.
Okay.
And like the other one, they, they were going in partially on it too, so.
Right. Because I, if I am remembering correctly, we got like an amazing price last year. That's why we went ahead and did more than one.
But we had the money too, that was.
Yeah.
But I thought it was like-
It, it was a deal, but.
It was a fraction of what it had been like previous year? It's not relevant. Not relevant.
All right. Anything else from the board?
Yeah, so a couple of other volumes. Um, CDVG grant for the, um, senior, um, project is, uh, unfortunately, uh, we did not receive any money and it was kind of a sad story actually. So it was like three hundred five thousand dollars available. The community development block grant funds are federal funds that are passed down to the county. And so the county doesn't make the rules, the federal, uh, people make the rules. So three hundred five thousand and they could only award three grants. So, um, you know, it wasn't up to the county to decide, hey, there's seven projects and, you know, we can award five or whatever. And, um, so in order to spend all that three hundred five, basically you needed a project that was close to a hundred thousand dollars. And our senior, um, you know, restroom renovation, that, that whole project was estimated about fifty-five thousand. And so it was a great project. It just didn't cost enough to get grant money for. So, um, we didn't make the cut. Um, so that's a, a two-year cycle for these community grants. So no question, uh, we'll be pursuing it in two years from now and definitely expand the scope of the project so that we're spending more money.
You know, something to think about, um, two years from now is um, going back to the wish list meeting, the, um, resurfacing of the floor in the old fire department. Remember I talked about having that done? So to include that because it's a safety thing, because it would help with the slipstuffs involved.
Yeah, uh, so actually the flooring that would not qualify.
This time, right?
No, it just, flooring alone doesn't qualify. So I was able to include the flooring um, in that small alcove area because it was the main entrance and the restrooms. But just to do flooring, uh, does not qualify. Now, you know, we could look at doing something with the senior room itself, uh, possibly, you know, adding handicap access doors to the senior room, also entry into the fire bay area.
Well,
We've got two years to talk about it.
Yeah.
It, there, there, it's not a required that it be uh, ADA project, but that helps in
That-
in the application process for consideration. So.
That goes a big way because the other factors include like median income and, you know, there's other communities that have a lower median income than Hinckley. So it, it, the ADA is actually a strong um, poll for us. Uh, we also received the grant a couple of years ago across the street for the, um, the elevator, the-
Yeah, for the senior.
So, you know, since we received one recently, that also, you know, kind of works against us, but who knows in two years what, who knows what the rules will be in two years. So, um, it's just unfortunate. It'd been nice to know beforehand, but so that was kind of, uh, too bad, but so be it. Um, second is, uh, as we're starting to receive, uh, applications for zoning inspector, if you want to start thinking about questions that you would like to consider for the interview process, you know, we'll have to come up with questions and the readings kind of a little more probably comprehensive than usual because it's- than usual, because it's, there's quite a bit of meat there, but start thinking about questions and um, you know, possibly we'll start looking at the beginning of June to start doing interviews. Figure after the memorial, but. And that's it.
Very good.
Oh, just to follow up also, since it was a concern, um, Hinkley Donuts will be providing
Ah.
the donuts. Their donut maker is working on Memorial Day, so we will be using Hinkley Donuts. And I asked for less.
The donut maker a guy or a machine?
It's a guy.
Okay.
It's a guy.
I've seen Brunswick, I'm ready.
I think so.
And um, for um, recording purposes, there's three people on virtually and four in the audience.
Our audience doubled from six thirty.
Anything from the public?
I, I'm talking real quick. Uh, Tom, Frater, Walden Ridge, um, thanks for the update on the annexation. The last year, as a community, we spent some money on investigating, I guess, or dealing with Twenty-Five River Road. Whatever happened there, because it doesn't look like anything's changed. I drive by it daily.
Well.
Well, what's changed is there's lights and I can see it in the night too.
The estimate on the cleanup.
Yeah.
Skyrocketed.
Okay, okay.
So it's up over twenty thousand.
Holy bro, wow, okay.
And, you know, me personally, considering that, I you, do you do one?
No, I, no, I, I.
What, what road do you go down?
Yeah, you can do it in every street in the township, basically. Yeah, no, I totally agree. Okay, okay. So did, did we, I don't know, should we maybe like, do you have a different consideration going forward when somebody brings a complaint like that again? Can we, I don't even know if that's allowed. I mean, I mean, it was all based on a complaint, right? Somebody said, I don't like that.
Well.
Go ahead.
Okay.
That's my recollection, anyway.
I, um, I, I do not know exactly how it started, um, and I may be completely on my own island thinking this. But this is also something that I think moving forward with a full-time zoning inspector, it's going to be something that's easier to have someone um, going around the township, you know, multiple times a week, looking for these zoning infractions.
Yeah, issuing citations, right?
Right.
Yeah, yeah, I got you. Okay.
Well, actually, and you mentioned that, so um, there's a house bill in works right now. It's still in committee.
Yeah.
But basically, um, it would give townships authority to issue citations and, and it would be through the police forces. And that means that it's like a ticket and you, you get a citation for, you know, having a nuisance or, you know, a zoning violation.
Yeah.
You gotta, you know, either go to court or pay the ticket and eventually, you know.
Yeah, or get the lien, right.
So, I mean, it's in committee, you know, how these things go. They go in committee, they die, but there seems to be pretty decent impetus this time around, but I, you know, that would be, that would be the absolute best
Yeah.
situation. But I think as Boni pointed out, actually Twenty-Five River had a long history and there was a lot of work and effort that was done in the past, and then it kind of gets dropped off and.
Yeah, that's, that was.
The hard thing.
Yeah.
But it, it's, it's, it's not the worst in the township.
Oh, no, I totally agree, totally agree, yeah.
And, and the other issue is that once you do some type of action like that, that doesn't prevent it from recurring, so.
A hundred percent agree, yeah.
I would rather, you know, I'd like to see the health department do something in, in helping individuals who have those kind of issues.
Yeah, right. No, I, I completely agree with you, Jack. I, I just, I was just thinking about, I think, God, we spent a lot of money last year on that subject and then nothing really seemed to change, and I hate to see us spend more money on another one if we can't afford to do anything about it, right?
Yeah, I don't necessarily know that we spent a lot of money on it.
Well, capital, time. I mean, it got talked about a lot. I mean,
It was discussed.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I mean.
Meetings, yeah. Um, and, you know, we use the prosecutor's office to do a lot of that legwork.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not at a cost to the township. But that was one of my um, concerns last year is kind of, you know, along the lines of what Jack was saying, but I'll take it a step further of if you do this at one, one home.
Right.
Now you are exposing the township. Now we are, we could be at liability, um, they, they, they could sue the township because they can come and say, well, what about this property and this property? So once you start, you have to, I mean, it's got to be everywhere.
I, yeah, I agree.
Now, that's taking on, you know, a risk for, for the township, so.
Let's say that it was fifteen thousand dollars property to do those actions.
And there's a hundred of them.
Right. That comes out of the township pocket.
Totally get it, man, yeah.
Totally incrementally gets paid.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, part of the reasons of living in a township is to not have those restrict rules, right? At least from my perspective. And you have to accept that as part of living there. Like I almost killed a chicken by your house the other day.
Oh, by the new house?
No, it was way up by you.
Uh.
It crossed right in front of me, almost killed it.
Sides that may have.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not mine.
Okay.
I don't like things with wings, but.
And I have just one last thing, um, and I, I was, I didn't know Mike wasn't here today. The, on Hinkley Hills, where the transitions, the speed transitions from fifty-five to forty-five, um, so going southbound essentially at Kellogg Road there, uh, all those signs are pretty blocked by foliage. I don't know if it's our responsibility as a township to make those visible, or it's a state route. I don't know if ODOT does it or, but just, okay. Yeah, I know it's state route. I didn't know who was responsible. ODOT is?
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, nothing else? I think we'll move to adjourn at seven twenty-seven PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, guys.